Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting for the Stratford Public Schools Board of Education Finance Committee meeting. It is Wednesday, March 1st, a bit delayed, and I hope everyone did well during our first snowstorm. I will call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM, and we do have a court, so thank you, everyone, for being here. Our first item on our agenda this evening is the acceptance of minutes from our January 23rd, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Second on our agenda this evening are budget transfers. I will read them, and then we'll ask Ms. Mangini to go over a little bit more detail, if that's okay. So, Budget Transfer A. Proposed transfer is to adjust accounts in Object 560. Per guidance from the annual state report, which is EFS, Regional Center for the Arts should be budgeted an expense to Boad and other schools account line. This line is to account for partial day programs, and the total budget transfer amount is $76,500. Ms. Mangini, any further information?
Just simply, I'd like to clarify that this was truly a result of guidance that we received from the state of Connecticut. As you may have noticed, we do have two regular education tuition accounts, and we do separate them based on the guidance from the state, but because one of the magnet schools, the Regional Center for the Arts, is not a full-day program, we were directed by the state to change that account code. So, this is simply moving the funds that were budgeted from one account code to another.
Great. I want to take a motion for this first budget transfer. So, second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion or questions to be addressed, Ms. Mangini, with regard to this budget transfer? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. David?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Henrick?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Budget Transfer Number Two. Proposed transfer is to cover various needs within the clinical cost account line in Object 300. Budgetary savings from special education, summer program, transportation, and tuition non-public accounts are being used to offset compensatory sources. Yep, sources. Total budget transfer amount is $907,573.10.
Okay, this is a sizable transfer, so I want to give you as much information as we possibly can. As you know, and as Mrs. Borges has been reporting to you for the last few months, we continue to decrease the number of our outplaced special education students. As a result, many of those students have fortunately returned back to district, but some of their needs have made it necessary for us to provide additional services, provide additional staffing, and we've also mostly had to make up for compensatory services as a result of not being able to fill positions early in the year. Most of these positions, at this point, are filled, but now we have to play catch-up because we do owe these hours to our students. So, for all of those reasons, unfortunately, because of our savings between tuition and transportation classes, as well as some savings in the summer program from last summer, we're able to cover this sizable transfer request. And of course, Ms. Borges is here for any additional information. She is really the expert in this area, but she's been educating me very well.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion. Second. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Ms. Bedell?
Just a quick question, and perhaps this is a question for Ms. Borges. The accounts that we're transferring from the summer program, the special education transportation section, and the tuition non-public, those seem to be very large amounts that we're transferring from. Is there a reason that we have so much left over in those lines?
So, they add up quickly. So, when you have an out-of-district placement, the out-of-district placement costs are pretty high. And remember, we budgeted for, I want to say it was 114 originally, and we are now down to 89. Okay, so that's a large amount, but when the students return, they still need services. So, we need to be able to contract out to get those services for them to make them be able to access their education in our buildings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions with regard to this budget transfer? Okay, thank you, Ms. Borges. And we will take a roll call vote on this budget transfer number two. Mr. David?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Henrick?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our itemized estimate of expenditures for fiscal year '24. You all remember, we had four workshops on this topic. The amount proposed here is a 3.89% increase over last year's budget, which is a total of $127,985,916. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the Finance Committee to the favorable recommendation to the Stratford Board of Education send over a budget of $127,993,416. That's an increase of 3.9%, which is the original budget.
Great, do I have a second? Second. Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Any discussion with regard to next year's budget?
I would like to discuss, if it was at all possible, I know we had talked about that, $7,500, to maybe discuss the idea of reallocating the $7,500 to budgets that were cut from during the initial principal building requests. You know, some areas, I know we've mentioned, is the Library at Johnson House, middle school sports, athletics, high school drama. Perhaps, Dr. Sunday, maybe at your discretion, these funds can be reallocated to help in some of these areas that I've mentioned. Just, you know, I know that they've been neglected over the years, and if we can get a little closer to some of the requests that were made.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sunday.
Great motion.
Any other discussion?
Is any of the alliance district funding included in this budget?
Can't think of it.
No, can't think. Okay. All right. And then during the question and answer period, I guess the same question kind of was asked twice about this dean of students, and there were two completely different answers given. Neither was all that clear. Can you clarify what the intent is and what the role of those positions are?
Sure. So, for clarification purposes, those dean positions, I do understand that there's been historical rhetoric and aversion to stay away from adding administrators. Those positions are not administrative positions. What they are is positions that would be in SBA, that's the bargaining unit. What we're looking to do is provide additional supports to our middle schools. If you take a look at the last couple of years, middle school just by itself is a very peculiar time for children between 11, 12, 12 and 13. Our middle schools have been the most active spaces of all of our schools, particularly given their size. How we envision this, supporting the work that's happening there, is we will have these deans who will be able to be on the floor in transition times, during the cafeteria times where we have some activities, assist with operations to start the day to end the day. I also envision this position supporting around data work. A lot of the improvement work that we have to do, I envision that piece as well. Additionally, there's some program oversight things that I think that we can tap into these skilled professionals. Evening coverage for events, supporting chaperone in Trisna that were fully out, quasi-out of the pandemic. But there's a lot of work that I think needs to happen at the middle school level. And globally, when you take a look at our middle schools, against the accountability index, our middle schools need substantial significant amount of work, substantial significant amount of work. And I really need, to the extent possible, the support in place so my school leaders at the middle school level, the principal and assistant principal can really spend time in classrooms, working with teachers to improve their practice. So, for a host of reasons, these dean positions are completely invaluable, as I see it, based on the future work that's in front of our middle schools.
So, being that they're SBA positions, and in our assistant principal line item, the increase was about $240,000 for those two positions, are we budgeting for them under assistant principals?
No, they're in the teaching bargaining unit.
But in our budget book on page 4, I believe, under assistant principals? I mean, that line item for both schools totals up to about $242,000?
So, the initial, when we started to look at job descriptions, the initial idea was to add this, we recognized some complexities, so the best place for us to put this was to trend down some of the work expectations, but still provide the support for our schools. So, we did, after the budget book was constructed, made that adjustment to make sure that it's a non-administrative position.
So, does that need to be, I mean, assuming if this budget goes forward as it stands, will we be making our first action on our new budget, either make a budget transfer, or how will we?
No. So, good observation. Based on the work that we do tonight, the entire budget book will have to go through a series of adjustments and reprint before it goes to the town. So, a lot of the conversations that we have tonight will reflect and update, and as a matter of fact, myself and Pam Mangini were having this conversation just a few days ago. But based on the work we engage in tonight, the new reflection will show up in the budget book that now gets advanced to the town from the board.
Thank you.
Ms. Cupy? Are the assistant principals currently spending time in the classroom in their current roles?
So, this year, there's been a heavy focus in our administrative professional community on instructional improvement work. I think it's ideal for them to desire to be in the classroom as much as possible, but the active nature of our schools, even though we have not had substantial amount of high-profile issues, it's still a very active dean each and every day. Our principals and our assistant principals are oftentimes part of the response to any kind of issues that may happen, even if it's just a slight disruption in the classroom. So, in a utopian sense, I would like to have my principals and my assistant principals to do evaluation and do non-evaluative observations. I would like to have them in classrooms for 30 or 40 minutes uninterrupted. That's not ideal.
So, that's not happening right now, but with your proposal to implement the dean positions, there seems to be some overlap in responsibilities, so that would free the assistant principals so they can go and spend time?
That's exactly, that's exactly the idea.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, discussion with regard to this motion? Ms. Bedell?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the proposed itemized estimate of expenditures that's currently on the table. I'd like to make a motion to remove several positions from the proposal, including the dean of students positions, the assistant principal position, the safety monitors, the dual-language teachers, and the four tutors that are in the proposal.
Do you have a total?
Give me a second, I have it here. It is lost in translation. I can try to read it for you.
Is it here?
Sorry, I lost my due.
Is it on?
No, it's.
You said the safety monitors, Kristen?
Correct.
I've got the. Ms. Bedell, while you're collecting your number, can you just provide a rationale to the amendment?
I don't believe that facing the cliff that we're going to face in the next year or two with the ESSER grant and the ARC ESSER grants expiring, that we need to be adding new positions when we're facing a much larger disaster in the next couple of years.
Okay, before we can go into discussion on the amendment, we need a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Henrick, a second. Any discussion regarding the amendment?
So, clarification, then, of all the proposed new initiatives and staff changes, what are you leaving in with your amendment? District nurse, that would be going to the parochial schools?
Guidance counselor.
The guidance counselor?
Yep.
The .5 guidance counseling?
The scholarship coordinator.
Scholarship coordinator.
The Smart Pass.
Smart Pass.
And that's it.
And so, you would propose, then, that dual language be ending at grade five?
No, I think that there's capability and room to maybe not combine classes, but to share teachers across a couple of the grades at least.
There's contractual limitations to that.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I'm sorry, Dr. Sunday.
There's contractual limitations.
There's contractual limitations to that.
I was just gonna ask for some clarification, like on that, Ms. Bedell. Like, how, I'm just trying to understand, like, how to envision a teacher, like, teacher sharing?
So, I mean, perhaps across the older grades, where they don't need, you know, constant one-on-one attention, those classes are typically smaller than a normal classroom. So, there's, how many students in each classroom? I think there's 14 or 13. Some of the classes are smaller. And if the entirety of, say, the sixth grade is in Spanish in the morning, and then English in the afternoon, and then the fifth grade is in, the fifth grade is opposite, so it's to share the teachers.
And if I may just remind everyone that we're having discussions regarding budget, not operational assignments, which is to the purview of our superintendent and our administrators. So, if you'd like to make an amendment as to reducing the amount in the budget, let's move forward with what that number is, the purview of assignments of that funding is not for the Board of Education to.
Actually, that's not true. The Board of Ed approves a budget based on what we have here. We cut line items, and then how the superintendent implements that is up to the superintendent.
Which is why we need a number.
But it is within our purview to make cuts on line items.
Which is why the amendment should have been led with a number. We're in the Finance Committee, we need the number.
Well, she'll get it, but she's talking about positions. And to her point, currently, we have, say, 600 students in the sixth grade, our fifth grade class has 500 and change. You would think that the current sixth grade has ample teacher staffing to accommodate those 600 students. Now, with our newer grade, the fifth grade, it's less students, so the same amount of teachers should be able to administer to a lesser amount of students. So, in theory, we really don't need new teachers, because if we're looking at class size, it might be reallocating, which would be under Dr. Sunday's purview, reallocating how those teachers are assigned, but we have less students going into the sixth grade than are there. So, in theory, we should need less teachers, so why are we adding teachers? And especially to Ms. Bedell's point, we've talked about this financial cliff with these ESSER grants, and now we're adding $4 million worth of new positions. Without, in the year I've been on, and the two, three years you folks have been on, have done nothing to proactively address that issue. It looms out there large, and we've heard doom and gloom, and reports of doom and gloom, but nothing's being done to address it, and adding positions only exasperates the situation.
So, I can perhaps, and for my clarification purposes, Ms. Bedell, and I think for the clarification of the audience, you're speaking specifically about the dual-language positions. Was that the position you were citing?
I was specifically asking about that, Ms. Corcoran specifically asking about the new language.
Okay, and your response was that there are smaller class sizes, and as such, we can move some pieces around. So, I don't, I actually don't discredit that perhaps approach, okay? But our dual-language program is a very, what I would call, structured program, and we average, and I would invite to get and maybe pop into this conversation, we average about 20 kids in each class. So, the idea is that we were going to expand our dual-language program from grade five to grade six, and then long-term, we would have some other ways to support our kids in that academic way as they matriculate to the middle school and ultimately the high school. Those are teaching positions, okay? Those are teaching positions. So, it's actually, there's not a lot of flexibility in that regard to just move pieces around because certifications play into this conversation, the skill set plays into this conversation. I would go as far as also saying that for us here in Stratford, presented on this in September, our dual-language program is one of our signature programs. It's a program that makes us different as a district. It's a program that makes us attractive to families. It's a program that we offer that makes families want to consider living in a Stratford -esque community. So, there's some work that we began a few years back. A motion of that nature would stall that work, okay? So, I want to put that on the table. And then to Mr. Henrick's point, there's some truth to what you're saying, but I think contextually, some of your numbers are wrong. So, if you add this up, and obviously, we know that we have to be responsive to the fiscal cliff next year, there is absolutely no way to avoid it. We made some decisions in the past that were not optimal, but I would also suggest or say that for us here in Stratford, responding to the fiscal cliff next year is not atypical for us. There is 170 other districts in the state of Connecticut who will have to respond to it. There's districts across the country who have to respond to the loss of federal dollars. In the context of what we're proposing here, these are program enhancements, okay? I want to draw to the front of everybody's thinking that we cannot forget that we're still a district in need of improvement, okay? So, we have some opportunities to do some things here. While Mr. Henrick is citing some of the past decisions, the past is the past. We're where we're at now because we have our sights set on making sure that Stratford as a school system is one of the best in the area. These numbers, Mr. Henrick, I think I heard you mention an infusion of $4 million in teacher positions, and that's absolutely inaccurate. These numbers total for all these program enhancements amounts to about .2 or .3% of the operating budget, okay, that is being proposed. So, in the context of what we will have to have conversations about next year when the fiscal dollars expire, this, I don't want to call it a drop in the bucket, because any, you know, any dollar or any penny saved is something that, you know, that eases the burden, the tax burden of taxpayers. But we have an opportunity to continue to do improvement work, and that's why some of these proposals, if you think about this, if you analyze this, they're very specific and very targeted to our schools and specific areas, to ensure that there's some level of operational effectiveness and excellence so people can do the work that they need to do in an inclusive space. If we have turbulent schools, fill in the vacancies that we report on at every finance meeting will be the least of our concerns. So, these proposals are very intentional for this Finance Committee and ultimately the Board to consider. While I understand and I sympathize with the financial implications of things, I feel that this is a very responsible ask against some of the expectations that we have across our school system.
Thank you, Dr. Sunday. We have on the floor. Ms. Bedell?
The number is $646,336. And, Dr. Sunday, just a clarification question as far as the dual language goes, you said there's 20 kids in each class, that's in each grade level, correct? So, there's 10 split in English and 10 split in Spanish, in the sixth or the fifth grade, there's 10.
Yeah, it's 20 and 20. So, in all, we should, at sixth grade, at grade six, we should have about 120, or is it 140? Dr. Gator, please step up to the podium.
Each year, when the lottery is held, there are 20 seats per classroom, and so there would really be 40 seats. So, there's 20 seats scheduled for the Spanish class and 20 seats scheduled for, and I'm saying Spanish class, these are for our EL students, and then 20 for whose first language is English. So, it's 40 per grade level. Occasionally, there's some attrition if a family moves out of town or whatever, but we, our optimum number is 20. You know, to try to, you know, aside from the contractual issue, the way this program is scheduled, each teacher takes their students in their grade level, and they have to very carefully work with their partner to make sure that they're covering all of the curriculum that we cover in all of our classes, and they have to plan very carefully to suggest that somebody else might be able to split two grade levels and cover both of that would really be just not possible for them to do, because then they would be working with two other individuals as well. Students would suffer in that case. So, and to Dr. Sunday's point, just two weeks ago, we had a visiting team that came to, from the representatives from around the state, that came to visit our program and share information back and forth. We're already planning for these students when they get to the middle school to make sure that we have appropriate programming for them as well. So, there's been a great deal invested in this program, a great deal of interest in the program, and to not plan for the final two classrooms to be held, you know, I just don't know what that says to the students who have been in the program and the families that have been part of this program for five years, six years now. So, they entered the program with a certain understanding, and to change that now would sort of be, you know, just against everything that we've said for them. So, they contributed, they put their interest and commitment into this program. So, this is something we've always done, it was a commitment that we've made as a district. So.
Thank you, Dr. Gator.
Just a question, a few more. So, currently, we have 600-plus students in the sixth grade, and we're pushing up 500 students, 580, whatever the number was, from the fifth grade. What happens to the teachers who are currently teaching the sixth graders? Because we have less kids coming up, so we should have the need for an equal amount of teachers, but we're hiring in two more teachers. They might need to be, have different accreditations, but we have less students, so we shouldn't need more teachers. And every year, we have retirements, people shifting around. If we've got to move a sixth grader teacher out of that position into a different elementary school position, they won't lose their job, they'll just be shifted, it'll be a lateral shift, and then we can hire in place of a retired teacher, somebody who has the accreditation to teach that dual-language program. So, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense that we have less students coming up than we have, but we need to hire more teachers because we can't handle the workload. It just doesn't, doesn't add up.
Just, again, for clarity purposes, we're talking about a very specific kind of program that requires specific accreditation, to use your words, a certification. So, it's not as easily transferable. I understand, when you just compute and look at the numbers and class sizes, you can, you know, move some pieces around, it's actually not that organic in placement, it's actually very, very complex. But what I do understand, what I do hear you say is, you know, in a circumstance where, let's say, we have 650 sixth graders, and we move up 580, we're talking about, you know, minus 80 kids, right? And we do have the capacity to actually move teachers who are on our payroll to spots where we can balance out class sizes, if need be, but the correlation you're trying to draw, while I think it has merit, it has merit in the quote-unquote "general education" space, more so than it has to do as it ties to this special dual-language program.
I think what Mr. Henrick is saying, though, is that there is, there are funds already built into the budget that could be used for those teachers as opposed to adding them on to new teachers.
What I'm, we just reduce the elementary school teacher load by an equal amount and push the, you know, leave the dual teacher number where it is, but reduce the elementary level because we don't need new teachers, we just need to reallocate which classes are in.
Madam Chair. Mr. David has a question.
Thank you. First, I just want a clarification. So, the cut, the amendment is $646,336,000?
Yes.
That you wanted to cut. And I'd like to call the question, the amendment, we could call it for a vote.
Yes, so the amendment on the table is a reduction.
Do you need a two-thirds vote to call the question? Call the question is a motion. You're not a State Representative.
Six of us, right?
Call the question. Yes, I mean, with the vote, no on the amendment.
The amendment isn't up for a vote. Call the question is up for a vote.
Call the question. Can I make a motion to call the question?
No, you would need a second.
The amendment, I was about to read off the amendment. So, Ms. Bedell has made a motion to amend the fiscal year '24 budget. It was seconded by Mr. Henrick. The reduction would be $646,336, making next year's budget $127,339,580. We are going to take a roll call vote on that amendment.
Is there any further discussion on that amendment?
Do you have more to say, Mr. Henrick?
I don't know.
I have.
I'll withdraw that, I'll withdraw.
Fair enough, but you didn't have the question, so I'm saying if the question's asked.
No, no.
There's two ways to end discussion, either to end discussion or to call the question. Neither was.
I'll withdraw that.
I mean, I'm not.
We had to discuss more, Mike, I thought you had, I thought you.
In fairness, not to myself, because I've already said what I had to say, but fairness to the other members of this board, they might have comments they want to make, but nobody asked that question, so I think it should be fair that we at least asked.
That's more than fair.
Any other questions, discussion on the amendment? Any other questions, discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote, Mr. Hendrick.
On the amendment?
On the amended amendment of. Thank you. Ms. Bedell, yes. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
No.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
No.
Ms. Cupy?
No.
Ms. Lance?
No.
Mr. David?
No.
And chair votes no. Thank you. We will now move with the original motion on the table made by Mr. David, seconded by Ms. Corcoran for a 3.9 increase of $127,993,416 for fiscal year '24. Any other discussion on the original motion? Okay, Mr. David?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Ms. Bedell?
No.
Mr. Hendrick?
Based on these, this ESSER Fund Grant Cliff, based on our Alliance District Cliff that's coming.
Yes or no, Mr. Hendrick?
I get to clarify my vote, Madam Chair. Read the rules. So I can't support a budget that adds positions at a time where we're facing a tragic financial cliff that was created by others.
Your vote is what, Mr.?
My vote is no.
Thank you. Chair votes yes.
Excuse me. I missed, I thought it was the amendment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy. We went through them and asked if there was discussion. I think he is asking.
It's reversing as well.
You're reversing? Can you please say it in the mic?
Yes, I'm reversing my note.
Thank you.
Do I get to clarify my vote? I do want to say, you know, here in Stratford, we do a great job at servicing our students with exceptionalities. And we also have a responsibility to provide likewise service to our general students. And so we should make sure we don't put ourselves in a position to do less for them. And so I strongly support this budget.
Thank you, Ms. Cupy. We are on now to financial reports. Ms. Mangini?
Yes, in your package, you did receive the financial status report ending January 31st, 2023. And you will note that we are projecting a balance at this point of salaries. And as I've reported in the past, we continue to analyze our salaries based on vacancies, based on positions being filled. We continue to have physicians being filled and then people leaving. And that, of course, affects the dollar amounts ultimately. And we are still struggling with a few of the physicians. So as a result, currently, we're estimating the $527,643 year-end balance that you see there. But as I caution always, we continue also to analyze the sub-account because obviously, we are hiring subs to fill those vacancies. In addition, we do always have our regular FMLA leave. Some of them are paid. So for a variety of reasons, we can't actually count on that amount being absolutely available on June 30th. But we'll continue to analyze it and continue to update the board. And of course, everything else at the moment is tracking pretty much on budget. Obviously, we've done pretty well with our utilities so far. It is only March 1st, so we really have only seen January's invoices. And again, we'll continue to keep a close watch on those. And we do have that $160,000 projected deficit, as I've reported previously, for gasoline. So overall, the budget is in very good shape this year. I'm happy to say that it hasn't been the case in the last couple of years. So it's really nice to be in this position.
Thank you, Ms. Mangini. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we will move to Dr. Clemmie for a grant update.
Good evening. You should have a grant report in your packet for the grant spending as of January 31st, 2023. I will draw your attention to two additions this month, both on the second page of the report. One is, we finally got our Perkins Grant approved by the state. That's for $123,000, and that's for support for our career and technical education programs. And the second one is a grant from the state for a FAFSA challenge for $12,000. I can't take credit for that one. That one goes, was submitted by our two high school teams, guidance counselor teams. And those are funds to be used to encourage students to fill out the FAFSA and get ready for college. So they're working on that. In addition, since I prepared this report, a grant for the, called CTSEDS stipends was approved. CTSEDS is the new system that PPS is using to enter IEPs for students with exceptionalities and any other special needs. And that's $30,000, and it pays for, primarily for staff time to either receive professional development in how to use that system or to start entering the IEPs and get those in as the state desires. The question that has come up the last several meetings, I checked on the HVAC grant today. We have not actually heard a result yet. But what I was, did see is that the, all the applications statewide have been reviewed and recommendations have been submitted to the commissioner. So it's sitting in the commissioner's office at the moment. So they hope to get it to us very soon. And finally, in progress, we have three things going on right now besides the normal day-to-day management of the grants. We have a school security grant that's due in March, which is a repeat of the Round Five grant we had applied for earlier, but we'll put some different things in it this time. Those grants were never awarded by the state. So that's why we got to get a repeat here. Secondly, we have a revision of the adult education grant that we're putting together for fiscal year '23. Unlike many other grants, you can only revise your adult education grant once. So that's coming up here this month. And lastly, the adult education grant, the new one for fiscal year '24, is due in the next few weeks, and we're working on that.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Clemmie?
I have one, if that's okay.
Sure.
The school security grant, that's a 50% match, correct?
It's approximately that, but it varies by district.
And do we have that set aside in any of our capital? Is that something if we apply for, we'll be able to match?
That'll be a question for the town once we decide what we're actually applying for.
What your priorities are?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions for Dr. Clemmie? Thank you. We will call on Ms. Borges for our special IEPs report.
Thanks to your approval for that transfer, we're going to be tracking on budget for each of our accounts. That being said, Mr. Proto always asks me to give last month's and this month's number of students with exceptionalities. So now when I do your little write-up, that's what you guys see. So currently, as of today, we have 1,261 students with exceptionalities. So as you can see, you guys, this is PPT season, and this is the season where we've done some MTSS. And we are going to start to see some additional students with identifications, and that's where our number starts to climb. So from the month before, we had 1,236. So we've gone from 1,236 to 1,261. And I think we'll end about where I let you know, around 1,305 at the end of the school year, okay? But right now, we're tracking on budget. We're able to service our students.
Are there any questions for Ms. Borges? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, we've got Item Four, Food Services Report, from Ms. Mangini.
Yes, you were provided with the report through December. As you recall, we're a couple of months behind in reconciling these and from what we get from SEDEXO. But we continue to trend very favorably in this program, which again, is really great to see. And we are required to keep no more than three months' reserves in our fund balance, which has to be kept separately from all the other funds throughout the town and the district. And we did recently put a spending plan, because we are slightly over, submitted to the state that was approved to hopefully replace some very antiquated equipment once and for all, which is great. So we're moving along very favorably there.
Did you want to touch base on what today was for the district?
No, actually, that's going to be part of my directory report, so I'll repeat it later for everybody here at the board meeting. But I am really excited to say that today was the first day that we returned free meals at all schools. And that was wonderful. It was a little bit scary. Very happy about that. I'm really pleased that our students, once again, can just go through the lines and not have to worry about the funding.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding food services, Ms. Lance?
What's going to happen to the kids who have outstanding balances from January to now?
We absolutely have to continue to collect those funds. We are not allowed to use any funds, fund balance, or smart funds to pay for past due balances. So we will have to continue to collect those fees.
And free and reduced applications that were coming in over the internet, they were all processed already when the children had, when the students had to pay for the lunches?
Yeah, and they're critical. I really want to get that word out. It's critical that families continue to submit those applications because on the free and reduced, we get that much less reimbursement, but it will make us whole. And so those funds will last that much longer if we are actually presenting our analysis correctly.
So if a student has a balance of $50, say from January till today, till one day, and they put in the application for free and reduced, and it comes back as entitled to free lunch, is that retroactive to January? Or does it start because of the process now? I'm really curious how that works.
I will get back to you definitively, but I'm almost certain it is retroactive for a period of time. I'm just not sure how far back it is. But I will get a definite answer on that.
I think, I think if that is, if that is the answer, I think we need to publicize that because I'm quite sure that there are students who.
We not only publicized it numerous times and will continue to, but we've also asked school guidance counselors, outreach people to try to work with families that they may feel could use some help and would qualify. So we really are doing all we can to encourage families to complete those applications.
Thank you.
Mr. David?
Just to piggyback on what Pam said too, it's so important for parents to do those free and reduced lunch applications. The reimbursements we get from a district and Kevin's sitting right in front of me, is based on, a lot of those reimbursements are based on free and reduced lunch, including, you know, federal reimbursement. So please, fill out those forms.
Thank you. Any other questions with regard to food services report from Ms. Mangini? Okay, wonderful. We will move now on to enrollment and registration status?
Yes, just quickly, as we're wrapping up here this evening, I will tell you that from January to, January 1st to February 1st, we increased our in-district by 15 students. Registrations continue. And that reflects pluses and minuses at all of our schools that netted to that increase of 15. We did start kindergarten registration as well, and it is off to a very robust start.
Thank you. Are there any questions with regard to enrollment and registration?
Just a quick question. At the Victoria-Soto School where the preschool is now, there seems to be about 35 more students. Did we open new classrooms there?
We did. We opened one, I believe, yes, one new classroom there.
Any others? Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned at 7:15 p.m.